I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public hearing tonight. Notice of compliance of five and seven Montgomery Street. Meeting is now open for public hearing. Nobody wish to address on that issue? I close the public hearing. What's the next step, Bob? Thank you. Kid results, surplus material.
Do you want to do the surplus material or do you want to do the cable first?
The cable bid is non-agenda, but we'll do it. I don't see that.
Okay. Well, let's do it yet over.
Okay.
Okay, contract 2002-07, power cable. There were four bids received. They were opened at two o'clock on Friday, July 19th by the clerk and deputy clerk. These have all been reviewed by our electrical engineer. You have a packet with his recommendation. I don't think it's necessary that I read this entire thing. This is open to the public if anybody wishes to read this recommendation. But the bottom line is, Mr. Wilson recommends the bid from Goddard Gold Electric, including bid item one, bid item two, and bid item three.
Make a motion that we award a bid to Goddard Gold Electric?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? They are the apparent low bidder, right?
Yes, sir, they are.
There be no discussion. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Surplus equipment, surplus bid?
Okay. On the 1984 Chevrolet, one tuck, one ton with utility box. The highest bidder was Eugene Leclerc from Ellingberg Center with a bid of $820. I'll do this whole page if you would like to do it like that.
That's fine.
The 1985 Ford Tempo, the high quote is from John's Auto Sales in Osable Forest. The 1985 Chevrolet pickup with plow. The high quote is Eugene Leclerc from Ross's Point. The 1988 Chevrolet S10 pickup, the high quote is John's Auto Sales from Osable Forest. You want to keep going to the top?
Yeah, might just as well.
Okay. The 1995 Chevrolet Capri, the high quote is Mark Googenberg from Sargateen, $1,888. And the 1982 Chevy Capri, the brown one, is Ken Dupree from Champlain, New York, and the amount is $55.
I need a motion to award...
Make a motion that we award all the high bidders the surplus material?
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? There be no discussion. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Now, I open the meeting to the public for comments at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board at this time may do so.
I'm Bruce Segal, the chairman of the truck committee of the fire department. The fire department has worked in over two years, almost two and a half years, on a new pumper. We have met numerous times. We've met with the representatives of the board. I think we're now ready to present the specifications for our new truck. And we hope you would consider it. I'd like to pass these out. Can you give us one in technical?
Thank you.
Now, since we met with the board, there's been a couple of changes. The truck we want to trade in has a front suction. And if we traded that truck in, surplus did, and bought the new truck, we would have a truck with no front suction. We hadn't used it for a couple of years, and suddenly, within two weeks, we used it three times. So, front suction is needed on at least one of the trucks. So, I added that. If the board feels that this change is improper, you can just have it as an extra, delete it, whatever you want. That's on page 56. I don't have my copy. I just put page 56, the front suction. I also added a federal siren, which is a very loud siren, and it's much more effective than the others. So, that's been added on page 29. Those items can be bid separately if you want. During our discussions, we got emails from American and France that they would not bid. Since then, I wrote American and France, asked them if they would bid. They said they would. They want copies sent to them. Tried to design a spec so that anybody can bid on those items. It says "or equivalent." One of our members is worried about the front bumper. It says 10-inch bumper. If we put a front suction on, I guess American and France doesn't make a 10-inch bumper, and he's all upset about that. Make a 12-inch. I'm sure that small design difference, it says "equivalent," so that's acceptable. The other thing is the frame, the way the frame is fastened. Now, we worked on this two years. He brought it up to me this morning, eight o'clock. Most of the copies have already been made and ready to present to the board. It also says "equivalent" on there, so if they make the frame differently in American and France, or E1, or some other company, it shouldn't stop anyone from bidding on the truck, because we agreed with the board, put "or equivalent" in there. So, if the board goes up for bid soon, it's possible that we can eliminate the new charge for air pollution control on the engine, which is a $5,000 to $8,000 upcharge. That'll be November 1st, a federal requirement on diesel engines. In order to meet this, they have to raise the price of the truck. So, if it's online, I understand if the truck is starting to be built, then it'll be exempt from that requirement by the federal government. We hope we can consider the bid. I think it's the best truck for the village. We have what is called a CAF system on there. It's been on the news. We had a barn fire a couple of weeks ago. They spent hours trying to put it out, two nights. We called in St. Paul's CAF system, which is air-compressed foam, and spread it over the hay, put it out in just an hour, instead of spending many, many hours. So, this truck is designed with a CAF system. The fire on Main Street, there was a lot of water damage. I understand the building. This damage would not have occurred if we had the foam system. It would have coated, it would have not soaked the walls the way the water did, and soaked down into the building. So, it should lower insurance rates on those, and all this. So, over a 30-year period, this truck, I think, will pay for itself with the CAF system. If you choose not to go with the CAF system, it's up to you. It's in your hands now.
How much are last system, Bruce?
Anywhere from $45,000 to $48,000 in addition to the truck. It's the latest technology. Keyesville and King Valley have just ordered systems. It's the new way of fighting fires. It takes fewer men, there's less pressure. One man can hold a hose instead of two. 10 times the efficiency of the water. It multiplies. If you have 1,000 gallons, you can pump much longer with the system. So, it's an excellent firefighting technique, and I think it's something we need in the village. We're welcome to discuss at any time. Any committee registered on that?
What about the truck that you brought here last week? Is that like a moner, or is it...?
Well, that's a demo.
Yeah, yeah.
They just fit a truck with certain things, and they bring it around to show mostly the engine, the pump, and how they build them. How the wells are made, how the suspension is made, and so on. But that's, most trucks are similar today. The only thing that's set in stone is the engine, the transmission, and the pump. Everything else is "or equivalent," except for a few small points. Most trucks, they get the engines from the same place, pumps from the same place.
Any questions?
You can look them over, and I come to another board meeting for questions.
Yeah, I'd like to look this over.
Bruce, approximately how many bidders do you think we can expect?
I would think we probably have six or seven.
You could say seven would be good. That would be good.
And all of whom, with the set of specifications that they're bidding on, will have a truck of similar quality?
I would think so. We mentioned before, American and France, it's usually a little more expensive. It's a heavier truck. It has air suspension, so it's easier to drive, so when you go around the corner, it doesn't lean. They mentioned all of that in their correspondence. It is a heavier-built truck. It will consume a little bit more money. So, when the bids come in, you can make your decision then.
Thank you for all the time you put into it. Anybody else address the board at this time?
Yes, I'd like to address the water and sewer thing again. I think everybody here understands the problem. See if we can rectify it. Some matter, you're gonna have to do that, though. If there are any questions about what I'm talking about, I can explain that. I think everybody understands, right?
Any questions through the board? The one problem, Barry, that it is, is that the local law says three months at this point. We have not changed that local law. I believe the board wants to look into that, and discuss that. Once that three months is up, then that apartment will be, if it's all you will have, is a debt service sum. Explain, I don't understand.
You're talking about the house I live in? It's been empty for two years.
Did you tell the board that two years ago?
Yeah.
We told the village that two years ago. I haven't paid a bill on it in two years. June, I started paying a bill on it. And that's only part of the problem. Maybe we don't quite understand you. I'm talking about not only my house, I'm talking about the houses I rent. They're, I don't see the point of paying three months. What I think is, you have to go back and change that, so it would make sense. Three months for nothing is not acceptable by anybody, I don't believe. Would you like to, if you had an apartment in your house, and you had somebody move out of that, and you moved your kids in there, would you want to be paying extra water and sewer for that part that is now not an apartment, it is part of your house? The only thing I've done is open the door, and you sent Bob down to see what had changed in my house. I thought everybody understood. I didn't change my house. Didn't do anything about it, except took one kid out of one bedroom, and put him in another one.
But is he residing in a separate apartment?
No. Well, it's my house. It's all in the same house. I have a door system that I can make the whole house into one apartment, one unit. Well, that's what I've done.
Or you can make it into a bathroom.
What's that?
I said, or you can make it into a bathroom.
Or I can make it an apartment, which it will be when I have less kids.
You've got three separate meters, three separate electric meters, you've got three separate bathrooms, three separate kitchens, right?
No, let's rephrase that. I have a wet bar in the family room. No kitchen. There's not even a stove in it. So, that isn't what we're talking about. I think you've got the picture in your head of two apartments, like, separate units, like this one in that room, like this at the other end? No. It's like this room and the next room, and you just open the door, and you live right there in the hallway. That's all. It's not the...
It's not separated by a hall or anything?
Let's change the scenario here. Let's go over to the house that I just built. I have an upstairs and a downstairs. The downstairs part moves out. There's nobody there using water and sewer. Why am I paying water and sewer? Because, it appears, because you changed the rule. Well, the rule didn't add up to this situation. I don't think it was thought of. Probably wasn't, because it doesn't, most people don't have this kind of situation, except people have multi-unit apartments. The only one I know here that does that is Brian. He understands me, I'm sure.
Well, yeah. It's kind of like when you're paying cable bill and you're not getting service. I mean, you're paying for a service that you're not really getting.
And as Doug said, if they come in in the middle of the month, like on the 15th, well, it's possible you want to have to charge them the whole month's bill.
But we'll be charging them anyway. We'll be charging you.
All right.
But even that, how come you can't charge for the day?
One person at a time, because I don't understand.
Okay, okay. So, you're charging me. If I moved out, or I moved in on the 15th of the month, you should be charging me for 15 days, or, at the very worst scenario, back to the 1st of the month, not for three months.
So, flat rate, you cannot, you can't...
Go rate it lower.
Sure, you can. 30 or 31 days a month, you put it right in your computer, they'll figure it out for you. That's not the issue.
Oh, it don't work that way.
It can be worked that way. You get a computer man to... But that's not the issue. We're digressing here. We're digressing here. What I don't understand is, if there's nobody there for 30 days, why are you charging me for it? That's simple.
Because the law, when we changed the local law on water rentals...
Okay, I understand. Okay, now the question is, when are you going to change it?
That's the next question.
There it is. Okay. That's all I'm interested.
We need to change it because it's not correct.
You don't have to pay for something you're not, service you're not taking, having.
We don't pay for service in the building. I mean...
That'd be like the telephone company telling you you had to pay three more months just because.
The phone would address something else here.
Arson, can you comment on this, why we changed that law?
Good bunny.
Why we changed the law?
When did we change the law?
June 1st.
June 1st of this year.
Actually, the sewer portion of the law was changed last January. The water portion was changed in April, and we can start doing it until June.
Well, what's the right question? The sewer was done on one grade. They changed, wasn't it?
I was sewer law, yeah.
The reason it was changed was because the people who go to Florida are usually gone for three months. So, that's what we use it with, as a guideline, a basis. You know, when you compare cable TV or internet service, you can't compare that, because your water and sewer is there in the house, whether you use it or not. It's there. If you're gonna pay for cable TV, you're gonna have it on. They're not gonna charge you if you don't have it on, so you can't compare that. You can't compare that.
What about when my GAT died, and we weren't running the store, and we weren't paying the water and sewer because we weren't using it? The water and sewer was still there, but we weren't paying it, so to me, that's the same as...
Your place was closed up, right? Place was closed up.
Their apartment is closed up.
It's being used by the family.
Yeah, but you mean to say if I use the third apartment, I get the third...
Are we talking about apartment C?
We're talking about both.
Are we talking about apartment C?
I think so. We have somebody upstairs.
There's a large rumor going around that that apartment is occupied by somebody of...
Because the aliens is upstairs. I don't know if that's what you consider A or B, C.
You have tenants in upstairs.
There's three apartments in my house, so I am renting one, yes.
Yeah, but I thought, we're talking about apartment C, aren't we?
No. Corinne is in apartment C, my daughter. She's 13. Ken and Ross, they both, their bedrooms both connect onto that bathroom.
This thing really is up to the board. They've had a month to decide what they want to do. I've been after them. We actually never sent you guys letters. I have to look them up too.
I know.
I'm throwing it back in their hands. It really has something to do with me. It's their decision.
I just, what I would try and do is get their appeal of why we did this.
We really have two issues, though.
There are two separate issues.
Yes, we have our apartment that is just our house, and then just about basic apartments that anybody in the village rents. Why people are wanting to pay three months sewer to rent along it, sewer water along things that aren't...
Two separate issues, yes.
Well, did you meet with Mr. Rasko?
Yeah.
Okay.
We talked to him on the phone.
Yeah.
He doesn't know why he's even asked this, because it has nothing to do with anything that he does, any of his functions. Because I haven't changed the house. Alls I've done is said, why am I paying a bill? Nothing's changed at all.
We don't rent it to an outside.
If nothing has changed, then what you have is three apartments. Bottom line. You change nothing, you have three apartments.
Well, we don't rent to someone else outside.
Doesn't make any difference. You have three apartments, okay? You must have three different mail addresses.
No.
In other words, you don't have an apartment, A apartment, B apartment.
So, if we go to the post office and cancel one of our addresses, then we don't have three apartments?
How are you assessed?
This is getting right out of hand here.
No, but how are you assessed? I'm just trying to...
It's a three-apartment house.
It's a three-apartment house.
It's assessed on square footage, I think.
Now, if you want to make it just a two-apartment house, what you'll have to do is get a building permit, make the structural changes.
This is ridiculous. Now, wait a minute. We're going way over the situation here.
No, I'm just telling you, if you're saying, just to clear it up as far as...
We have changed nothing. We get assessed by square footage, even if there's 50 in there, I think. I don't know that, but I'm thinking that. If I took 49 of them and lived in them, I would still be assessed the same footage. And I wouldn't be paying 59 bills, no, 49 bills. You all understand my problem here, and how it's so simple, and everybody's trying to add in all these little things? Alls I want to build stock. That's it.
I think you have to understand, at least my confusion, I don't know if I'm speaking for anyone else. When you say to us, "I've changed nothing," that says to me, you still have a house which contains three apartments.
That's correct.
You've changed nothing. Okay. So, from our point of view, you still have three apartments, which means three separate bills.
Which you are using the water and sewer.
No, but when you say, "I've changed nothing," what does that mean?
I open a door.
You've changed nothing, right.
I locked, see, my house is situated so that all of the doors are in a big circle. Alls I gotta do is open them, and I can go all the way around the whole bottom of my house, right? When I have an apartment, I lock the doors. The point is, it's not a rental property any longer. It is my house. If I took the third apartment, I certainly wouldn't pay three bills. Would you?
I don't know. I don't know how to answer that, because you're telling us that you changed nothing.
It's not collecting rent, though.
Okay. What do we want to call it, then? What would you like to call it?
Well, I'm just saying I don't...
We haven't put a nail in it anyway. We haven't put anything.
Well, we're trying to help you, sweetie.
Let's stop the argument back and forth, then. We've got left talk and then the other talk. They can't understand what's going on.
I think we're trying to understand your situation, and we're trying to work with you to change it, or to somehow come up with a solution as best we can. But when you tell us, "I've changed nothing," I don't know how to interpret that.
I have changed something. I no longer have a tenant. That is the change. I live in it. The change is the personnel who are there.
Bob, did you actually go down and look at it, or no?
I can't, unless you invite me in.
Would you allow Mr. Rasko to come and investigate it, so that we can try to get to a solution?
Why? I don't mind Bob coming down. He's been in my house. That isn't the issue. Why?
Well, we can make an accurate assessment.
Assessment of why?
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I guess Kelly doesn't understand.
You want to know if I have a tenant?
No, no, I'm talking about the structure of the property. I guess I'm not understanding. I've never been in your house, so I don't know what it looks like, and I don't, I guess I'm not understanding the change.
I guess this is the issue here. It isn't the question of whether there is anybody, or I've changed anything. The question is, if I don't have a tenant in there, why am I paying? If he wants to come and see if I got a tenant, I have no problem with that. Actually, I probably have no problem at all, except I don't understand why it's happening, why you'd even discuss it. I've got two people who are paying rent. One is me, which is mortgage. One is somebody who pays me rent, and I'm paying three sewer bills. I don't want to pay two sewer bills, so it's gonna have to stop. If it takes a legal change here, that's fine. Get it done.
That's what's gonna have to happen.
All right, there it is. If Bob wants to come down to my house...
Now, let me ask you this. You still have, you're still gonna consider three? According to village law, what I understand is that, once we decide, or the board decides that you don't pay any water or sewer, there's still a debt charge.
What's that mean?
There's a debt charge on your bill that is not taken off, period.
How can that be?
It's there.
We borrowed money to do the sewer plant.
Pay off the debt on the sewer plant.
Well, hey, can you borrow several...
A debt charge, what do you mean by that? On your bill.
You paid a debt charge?
I don't have the bill, but it's on your bill.
Well, we already paid one debt charge, then.
Right.
You want us to pay two, three?
Right.
No.
But excuse me just for a minute, okay? I'm trying to just piece this all together. Okay, no matter what, okay, when you had three apartments, okay? Okay, you were paying three sewer bills. Right. Now, one moves out, and your kids move back in there, but you're still using the water and sewer on that third apartment. Yes. Okay, so, my understanding, that is why you were getting built. Because you can still, if I own an apartment building that has, say it's a square, and I have four apartments in there, and as long as I have, as long as I have doors that connect all these apartments, then I can say it's either one apartment or four.
No, you've nobody left it, though.
What do you mean, nobody left it?
We had somebody go down and read the meter.
They'd be paying the wrong...
You have three separate meters.
Right, they'd be paying the electric if they were renting it, because it'd be in their name.
But I'm saying the same thing. I own this four billion.
You don't pay electric in that meter?
We pay it for ourselves, but we wouldn't pay it if, like, aliens upstairs pay their own, you send them...
Right, but that's what I'm saying, is you guys created this when you created that extra apartment.
Right, which was no problem to do first.
We did that 20 years ago. That wasn't a problem.
Right, so you've been paying for these three for 20 years?
No.
That's his point.
No, that is an additional point.
Everybody paid their own.
Right, but there have still been three bills going through your structure.
Then, two years ago, or whatever, two years ago...
It's two years ago, it became two bills.
When I said, called and said, "We're taking this back to use as our own family,"
No, because I'd have been here two years ago, telling my wife I'm paying.
We've been paying the water and sewer on one establishment, because it was the same family.
People talking, I can't...
You go ahead, talk.
Well, that was it. We paid one sewer and water. That was it, because it was our family.
And you've been doing that for a year?
Two.
Three.
Two, three.
Because we weren't renting it. It was us. It was just like you living in your whole house.
What has happened with the second electrical meter on that?
They just add it to our first one, and they got a spot on the thing that reads the meter, and it sets it, adds it all together in a column.
So, you have two meters for your family, and one for the third apartment.
The only reason I would do that, because I wanted to, well, I don't know, because I want it. Let's rephrase it. I pay for what electricity is used in that other apartment, because I use it, right?
Okay, so why don't you want to pay for the water and sewer in that?
Are you kidding? Would you pay two bills for your house?
But you don't have one house.
I do have one house.
You have two apartments.
I have one house.
You have a door.
Three apartments, two of which I live in, which makes it one, makes it back to two.
So, if I live in two apartments, I don't have to pay one water and sewer?
Obviously, yes, that would be the answer. Yes.
So, would you say...
But you didn't add people. We just took the same people and split them out. We didn't use more water and sewer. It'll go to the bathroom, it'll be different.
What you're trying to say is, I should take those meters, take the meter out, put them all in one electrical panel, and I no longer have two apartments? No. Why would I do that? Alls they gotta do is add the figures on the meters.
Then you would be separating your house from your apartment.
Why would I do that? You see, I've got everything, excuse me, everything separated, because my house is so huge, and I use so much panels along the thing. I put them all kind of separate, so I don't overload anything. I don't want my house burning down with me in it. So, it takes a lot of panels. So, I have it separated into apartments, because I wanted them to pay their electricity, and I do mine. When they moved out, alls they did was add those two lines together, and it's simple.
So, you wouldn't want to take the residence that you and your family are in...
Absolutely not. It would cost me hundreds of dollars.
And convert it to a meter.
Why would I do that?
Come on, I'm just asking.
No, I'm gonna move it back to an apartment as soon as I can.
Oh, you are gonna move back to the apartment.
Five years or six years, when the kids are gone.
You would just like to leave it the way that it is for now?
Yeah, there'd be no point in spending money to do nothing. It doesn't make any sense.
I think we need to take, yeah, you know, you have a valid point, Barry, and the board's gotta make a decision here.
Okay, that's one issue. Don't forget the apartment that I don't live in when somebody moves out. Both have got to be addressed. Both issues have to be addressed.
Barry's not the only one in town that's got this problem, eh?
Brian has this problem.
Where is everybody?
I know.
It doesn't seem like there could be complaining about it.
Maybe it hasn't happened to them yet. It's only been June.
The same thing did happen with you.
Yes, it has been complained about. Jules Treyhand complained to him about it.
But it never came to this board.
Because people don't, I don't know why, they just, I don't know the answer to that one.
It is something that we are aware of, the bookkeeping that's going to be required to go on with landlords and vacant apartments versus rented apartments. I think it's something that we do need to take into account.
I understand why you're doing it.
But I think that you have, you know, I think if you give us a chance, we will come up with something that hopefully will be workable for everyone.
Can I bring up another issue? So far, I've paid two bills of $85 that shouldn't be, that shouldn't have been addressed to me at all. I want that kind of addressed to, I don't know, she talked to me when we was down in bed, but I don't...
She, you mean me?
Yeah. Who is it? I don't, I don't know who is, that does the elect... Carolyn? Has she done the electrical stuff?
Carolyn is there?
She, she doesn't have anything to do with that. She just takes and does whatever her job is, right? She can't make any decisions here. I need to have her, the issue addressed to her, so I don't have to pay that all the time.
But even if, even if you are only paying one water and sewer charge for your family, you will still be billed for yourself as well as your tenant in the upstairs basement.
Yes, that's not an issue. That's okay.
As long as you understand that. So, even if we resolve it that way, you're still gonna receive basically two bills instead of three.
Perfectly fine.
But what's the other debtor, or whatever you just said?
It's like when you borrow money and it's in your house. You have to pay debt.
Right.
One, we didn't borrow money to do sewer plan for free.
We're gonna pay two.
No, there's not three. No. You would not, you would...
What was that charge?
If, if it works out that you have your one unit for your family in the upper back apartment, you will receive two watering sewer bills.
Yeah, right.
You will not receive a debt charge unless you're being burdened.
Yes, okay, that's fine.
Yes, it's out of the bill.
I am not talking about legitimate bills. This is a legitimate bill, I think.
But the debt service is gonna come into your other situation when you're talking about having a vacant apartment. If you have a vacant apartment, the bill will not be zero dollars and zero cents. It will be reduced to the debt, debt service fee, how much is that?
Not your house, your apartment.
Right, a vacant apartment. So, now we're into the second issue, not the one you have with your family. I put it as a landlord, okay? So, if your apartment is vacant, the bill does not become zero for that, for those months during which it is vacant. It, that, that is where the debt service...
So, that really isn't a water and sewer bill. It's an official bill.
No, it isn't.
It's part of the, it's part of the sewer bill.
How much is it?
About ten dollars a month?
Ten dollars a month, something like that. I, what's, what's a debt service?
I think it's ten forty-two. About thirty-two cents a day.
And that is part of your regular monthly bill that we all receive. It's just that that is what will show up instead of a zero on vacant apartments. That's what's gonna show up. Not your home, but at a rental property.
Okay, let's go back to that one other thing. What would be a fair compromise? Instead of pay three months, like, say it was open, what would be good? One month, maybe?
I don't see any money. If a guy moves into the fifteenth, make him go back to the first. Or if he, if you can do it, he says you can't. I think a computer person could straighten that out really quick. Have it from each day mount to a dollar thirty-three cents or a dollar, two dollars or something. I don't know. That's, that's nothing to do with any, I just gave that a quick thought. I don't know. You'd have to figure that out. Go back to zero, make you pay for the home that month, or, or whatever. See, we're gonna collect this from the other guy.
Yeah, exactly. You're gonna pass it on to the...
But if he's not there, we're not collecting it from the other guy. We're not doing, we're not getting anything for that. At least if he works one day of that month, he has got something for his money, at least a day. But when he gets nothing, or we get nothing for his money, that's not right.
All right. The board's gotta take this under advisement.
Yes, I'm sure.
The next meeting, we'll have an answer for it, guaranteed.
I probably won't be here, but I...
We'll send you a letter.
We'll advise you.
Okay, that's fine. I hope I didn't cause you any... I get just a little excited when I talk about...
Confusing. Well, I understand, though, so I mean...
Anybody else want to address the board? Another issue?
It's time. We all have copies of the minutes. Is there any addition or deletions?
I have one change. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 okay. On the second page, under Reports, the Mayor's and Trustee Mayor Rivers, second paragraph, third line.
Which, which you mean?
Oh, I'm sorry, the very first one. Page two, First Meeting, page two. Right, Second Page, Under Mayor Rivers' Report, Second Paragraph, Third Line. I, I did not say that the cars should be parked in the front parking lot of Village Dock. Just would like that as a correction.
I thought you wanted to please park the cars?
No, I wanted them on the side, near the water plant, in the D E room.
Oh, I thought you wanted them where they are.
Nope. I was asking for a clarification, I think, of where they were moving.
Anyway, they'll be gone tomorrow.
Thank you. That's okay. Just correcting the writer, George.
Any other additions or deletions? If not, I entertain a motion, uh...
Make the motion. We accept the minutes as amended.
Amended. Seconded. Uh, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, bills?
No additions or deletions.
Thank you, our Senator. I think you make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
First piece of correspondence you have is addressed to the Mayor and Board of Trustees. It's dated July thirty-first, two thousand and two. Dear Mayor Rivers and Board of Trustees, I wish to advise you that effective September thirtieth, two thousand and two, I will resign my position as Village Code Enforcement Officer. Thank you for your support during my tenure. This position has been a rewarding experience for me. Sincerely, Michael R. Roscoe, Village Code Enforcement Officer.
Do we need a motion to accept that? I don't think we can accept that.
Except with me, Brad.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to thank Bob for all your work that you've done in the village throughout the couple of years, few years that you've been...
Well, better for it. Thank you. I want to thank you too, Bob, that you went down to September thirtieth. And we've still got a couple of issues to go. No, John teasing you a little bit. Just, it certainly has been a pleasure having you on board. You've done a thorough and excellent job for the village.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The second piece of correspondence you have is from the New York State Office of Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation. It's addressed to the Mayor. Congratulations. As Governor Pataki announced today, a matching grant of two hundred thousand dollars has been received from the Clean Water, Clean Air Bond Act for the Ross's Point Lake project. Your grant will be formally awarded by means of a contract, which will be coming to you from your regional grants office in the near future. I urge you to work very closely with the region and not to begin working the project until appropriate contract conditions have been satisfied. Governor Pataki's strong commitment to this program has made eight million dollars worth of grant funds available for distribution this year. We are eager to initiate our partnership with you for this very important project. Most sincerely, Bernadette Castro, Commissioner, State Historic Preservation Officer.
Yes, ma'am.
That's good news.
Oh, what happened to my agenda? Okay, Reports of Mayor and Trustees. First thing on my agenda is to authorize the grant administrator to create an application for another two hundred thousand dollars for the boardwalk. This grant was brought up at our last meeting or the meeting before. I, I can't remember which one. And, uh, Paul had received a call from these people saying, after reviewing the blueprints and the plans and everything else, we need the extra money. And you've already got your percentage, because you can use the existing grants you got as your money earned. So, the amount of money we need for this grant is already here and due by the state. So, it's actually no cost to us whatsoever. They said, "Put it in," because they gotta have it in by, I think it's the fourteenth of this month. It has to be in their hands. And I've authorized Paul fully had, but I want the board to know this. And actually, we should have a motion to that. And I'll make a motion that the, do the application for the other two hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Second thing on my agenda is a discussion. You all have a copy of this industrial appraisal. Through our last insurance, the processes, process, I'm sure the trustee, Patfield and Dr. Harper are a little aware of what we went through with this insurance thing. We found out that our industrial appraisal is way behind the times, way down. I believe, Deb, that this is the company that did it originally.
Correct.
And this proposal is to come in and completely do a completely industrial appraisal of all the buildings. That's everything. Am I correct?
Correct. It's an onsite, which is, you know, this has been kept up every year on a computer disk. You know, things get sent to them, they add it on, but it's not an onsite appraisal, which is something that we need. If we can't do this now, then this definitely needs to go in the budget for next year.
With the amount of changes that are going on in this village, I don't know, and I, my wife, I don't know if we can do this, but with the amount of changes that are going on, with the underground electric, with the stuff coming off the poles that we not, had to take off the books, and the underground wiring that's going in, it has to go on the books, new water lines, the new expansions and all this, all this stuff has to go on the books or come off the books. Am I right?
Yes, correct.
All right. We have a couple of programs, I believe, and I believe our Senator, you're the, the, what is it that we got there? It's not Windows-based, but...
What program we got on, C P R, again?
C P R records?
It's DOS.
It's DOS, and do you want to bring that up to Windows-based or, you know, which actually makes sense.
Yeah, because we had to go down a couple of versions. We had to go backwards in Windows, Windows version.
Anyway, with, with all this going on, it's my recommendation that we try to find the money to do this. Now, what, if we can't, we can't. Simple as that. But what I, you know, what I'm understanding, the, uh, I don't believe the fire department has been done in years. I don't believe that the stuff has been, been added to, to, to the records.
The last onsite appraisal we had was in nineteen ninety-two.
Ten years. Forty percent behind, that's three, four percent a year. And I'm sure that, Bob, there's a lot of stuff that you've got that has never made it.
Well, you know, Dirk, I, I understand the appraisal, but the electrical should be up to snuff. I mean, we've been keeping records for years, but we take down and what we've been putting in. I mean, our Sen's got all that stuff. I mean, the rest of the buildings and stuff, the, probably I can see it going to those, but the electrical should be pretty close to snuff. Our Sen?
This has something to do with the electric.
Oh, that has something to do with that. Then I stand corrected.
All right.
I'm sorry. I, I just assumed it was everything in the village.
Okay.
It's everything excluding electric. The C P R is to the electric. Is there anything else?
That has to know that stuff. Uh, I opened this up for discussion from the board. I want everybody's opinion on what we should do.
I think it's not this year, then next year.
Yeah, I mean, if we can find the money this year, we should do it. If not, then we can work it in the budget next year.
This is normally done, Deb, every ten years? Is that correct?
It should be done more often.
More often than that.
I would say five.
Every five years?
You know, we found so many things wrong when we tried to do this.
That's gonna raise our assessment. That's also gonna raise our insurance premiums up, too. But we have to be insured for what we, you know, stand to lose. Say, we have an earthquake.
The only other solution is something that we spoke about with trustee Huckrow and trustee Penfield the day that we met, is that you could have each supervisor do an inventory of, of their department and try and go with that until budget time, when you can put this in your budget and do it next year. We're already working on the water plant doing that.
They did a water plant, but I'll tell you what. What I see, the electrical department is strapped. There ain't no way that...
Yeah, but it doesn't matter.
Electric doesn't matter.
And there's our dog. How the public works. They're pretty well strapped.
Public works, we can go through again. I mean, you know, it, it isn't something she needs to know money. It'd take two months, three months. I mean, you know, we can go through our building and bring the stuff back up to snuff. But Carol should have most of those updates in her book, so we can basically get a read-off from her, go off, go through, make sure we didn't miss any of the new equipment in the building, that's all. And, you know, it's, apart from public works, part of it goes, it's not all that far, far back.
We're talking big things, like the price of a pump in the water plant. You know, Doug and I talked about this last week. Get a price for one, multiply it by four, and then you know what they cost. Do your filters the same way, so that you'll end up getting a pretty accurate figure.
Yep.
Well, I think that's what we should be doing for next year, to have it professionally done.
Because in the meantime, we've got the water tank going up. I mean, you're talking millions of dollars.
That we know the price for.
That we know, yeah. Okay. Enough saying. Okay, announcement, again, August seventh, band concert at Cedar Hatch Nursing Home. Everybody is welcome. Bring a chair. Enjoy. Also, the senior picnic for senior citizens on August fourteenth in Plasberg. If you're, if you're going, if people have decided they want to go, please get in touch with the board, Mrs. Barkley. There's only about five of them. Hold on, I drew a blank. Who, Deb?
Edna Barkley.
Edna, yeah. Okay. Please get in touch with Edna Barkley. I apologize. I drew a blank. Senior moment. Also, I wasn't gonna make this announcement, but seeing that it was on the news last night, I guess, or tonight, we're gonna make that announcement. Tomorrow morning, trustee Huckrow and myself and Paul Cordier will be going to Plasberg. The lieutenant governor will be there to make the announcements of quality communities of Ross's Point and the city of Plasberg, which will be one of twelve in the state of New York. So, I think that's quite an honor, and will open the doors for us to do a lot more things in the future, including downtown revitalization and whatever, I think, our crazy minds want to think about. So, it's, it's actually a very good piece of news. We certainly will find out more about it tomorrow. And, okay, resolution and annexation. And I'm only gonna read the short part of this, because I'll be here for a week, we know whereas is what force. Whereas, a petition for annexation dated April ninth, two thousand and two, for a certain piece of lands located in the Towne and Shandt Plains of the village of Ross's Point was presented to the Towne and Shandt Plains pursuant of Article seventeen of the General Anonymity Law of the state of New York, and whereas Z land was particularly prescribed in the skyville attached here, here, too, and made part of hereafter. The reason, what we have to do is pass this resolution. The town has already done it. The basic reason for, for this is where the water tank is going. That piece of property was in the town. And the town line ran right down through the middle of Academy Street. We paved that street. We maintained that street. So, when this property became available, they hooked us to have that piece of property within the village's limits. So, we petitioned the town. We had a joint public hearing. There was no, uh, nobody spoke against it. So, I have this resolution, and I put it before the board, and it's a roll call vote. But I need a second.
Second.
Okay, I have the second roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jamison.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. To get this done, then, that's just a matter of paperwork. Trustee Menard, that's it for me. Thank you.
First item on the agenda is a discussion of the Independent Energy Efficient Program, the annual meeting that's coming up. It will be held on Thursday, October tenth, at the Wyndham Syracuse Hotel in Syracuse, New York. I believe we'll be sending two representatives to this, George and Bobby and Richard Bowen.
This is board of board's information. This is the program where we, uh, Energy Saving Program, and this is the annual meeting. Which have been very good to us.
Yes.
Very good to us.
I'd like to make a motion that we send two of our delegates to this meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in vote by usual side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
My second item on the agenda is a resolution designating the delegate for the annual M U A conference. Resolution is, whereas the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point is a member of the municipal electric utility... is a member of the municipal electric utility association of New York State, and whereas the annual conference of municipal electric utility association has been called on August 27th, 28th, 29th, and 30th at the Sheridan Syracuse Springs Hotel, now therefore be resolved that George A. Rovers be hereby designated and accredited delegate to the village of Ross's Point.
Let's have a call on the motion.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Next item is a report on the paving project. It is my belief that the paving is all done throughout the village. And you seem to have done a very nice job. I don't think we've got too many complaints, huh? Everything seems to be very well. They're all done. They're out of town now, Bobby?
Yeah.
I'll make a suggestion to the board. I would like to have the board send, uh... Sure. Bike Industries a congratulation letter of some type, not because of the job they did, but it was the attitude of their employees. They were certainly a partner to work with. And I think anybody that dealt with them, any of the... The public that dealt with them about their driveways and stuff had nothing but nice comments to say they were very, very cooperative. They did most anything that they wanted done. And I think it would be nice that we helped them.
Do we need a motion on that, Beth? No?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we send Bike Industries a letter to commend them on their professionalism.
Motion made and seconded. All those, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
My last item is a discussion. We need a stop sign at the end of Main or Drive.
That's the street.
Got a new street and... Yeah, we need a new stop sign.
A couple of things while you're talking about that, that will fit into this. I'm talking with Chief Craig and the manager of senior housing. There is a problem, but I think the problem was taken care of very nicely in that if you pull out on that street, now that that's a street corner, if you pull out and the tenants park right there, you can't see down the street. Especially with the clientele that's in there. We have asked to have no parking from a certain point, from a street corner. We thought that we were going to have to do it, but the state of New York will figure it out. It's a state highway. We don't have to do that.
So what are we going to do about a stop sign? Have you ever made a motion on that deal?
Yes, yes, it has to. Has to go on the local law.
I'd like to make a motion that we put a stop sign at the end of Main or Drive.
Second one. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have for the meeting.
Thank you, trustee Menard. Trustee Huckrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I have is a request authorization for the court to try to attend the right-hand ball painting school from September 23rd through the 27th. I'll set that in front of the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Can we tack on some time to the clerks staying here, but going to the school?
No. That's a good idea. Can we amend the motion?
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Second item is an update on water projects, and who's first, Doug or John?
John, please.
Basically, I think you're probably all aware that the thing's coming out of the ground now. We met last, what was it, last week, week before last with the contractor. The foundation for the tank is completed. The first wall section was placed July 30th. Finally, they're going to place the second wall section today. Those are the complicated sections of the tank. And basically, the plan of attack is to cast a new section each day. Consequently, I think it should be drawn in about seven feet a day for the next nine days. So it's going to zoom right up there for you, hopefully. There are some downtime there. The contractor works 10 days, takes four days off, so there's a little dead spot in his schedule from the 14th to the 20th of August. But by the end of August, I would expect that the bulk of the concrete work would be done over there. Should be about 85 feet tall, plus or minus, depending on where you measure. Ben, I'm going with the water plant personnel, Doug, and the people out in Texas resolving a few questions and method minor details on how the work is going to be done on the steel portion of the tank that should start this fall. So that's the basic update for this month. Like I say, the tower should be growing a lot faster than the corn in the next month. And if it isn't, you'll know that the hair is coming out of my head. There are some pictures circulating around somewhere of a tank in Colorado that was done last month. Typical of what should be showing up there. You'll see a little bit during the casting process, there's a little discoloration on the tank. Don't get too alarmed, most of that comes off when they come down through the stems, sandblasted, to give it a more uniform appearance. It's a difficult time getting them out of the ground. However, I think they have a pretty good plan of attack on the rest of it.
Is that it, John?
Yeah, pretty much mine, yeah.
There you go.
Just, we did get Mr. Zachary to sign the easement for his property at the corner of Liberty and Lake. So that's not an impediment anymore to going on with the other water contracts, which will include the new transmission line, a new transmission main from the water plant up to the water tank. We've been working on it for a while. Amy Dylan?
Discussion on what's going to be Avon Deck North Country Community Advancement Program. This is a grant that we're going to, hopefully going to be applying for in the amount of $25,000. It will not require any financial participation on the part of the village as we see it, except that part of the application has to include some... Badu, George. Some quotes as to the cost of work that we'd like to have done. What we hope to do with this $25,000, if we get it, is to work on the sidewalks downtown, have them rebuilt so that they are no longer hazards. And Bobby said we can get some quotes, but unfortunately, vendors don't do quotes for free anymore. And that means we're going to have to get a couple of quotes, and they're probably about $100 or so. Please, Bob?
Oh, imagine someone had to really come down, walk all over and strike them.
So I'm going to make a motion that we authorize Bobby to get a couple of quotes so that we can file this out. It's going to be done fairly quickly. It's going to be in Albany by May 9th, September. So I'm requesting permission to get a couple of quotes on this square.
How many quotes do we need, Bob?
Three.
Do we need... Do we have to have three?
Couple, I think, about... Over 10, now we have to have three. This is not the same thing at all.
No, no, that's a different thing.
This is just to justify to the people down there that we have got some paperwork.
Just to justify, two quotes and you're going to force it?
We don't know what the...
They're not doing the project.
Alright, they're not doing it.
They're looking to see if they're going to have it. They're going to be able to finance it with money. What they're doing is getting... If I understand this, you're going to get a quote, if the quote's $100,000, they're not going to do the project, is what I guess is what we're looking at here, right? If it's over the dollar amount you got, you got to go to bid for it in.
We're not looking for authorization to spend anything other than the amount of this grant.
Exactly.
For this.
We're only looking for a couple hundred dollars.
There may be other money for... You would have forced agree that that amount of money probably will not complete that whole project.
No, we know that. But what you're going to get is, or an estimate, is you're going to get an idea of what it's going to cost to fix it. But then you're going to have to go out for bid to get it fixed, because it's over $10,000.
We're not getting any bids.
You're talking down, maybe next spring before even the night part.
Exactly.
Before then.
But it's, you know... So it's too good.
If you get the grant, I'll...
Our senate says two to three.
Okay. But before we get into this, I talked with the contact person that we have in Plasberg and asked her how quickly we had to spend the money. Because as Lake Street is going to be repaved and maybe somewhat rebuilt the summer after next, I think it'd be kind of a waste to, if they're going to do that, to rip up the sidewalks now and rebuild them, and then rip them up again the next other lifespan. That kind of money, if it's going to be just a waste. But we will know probably in September if they're going to do some rebuilding down on the area. Am I correct, Tommy?
Are you talking about the Route 11 upgrade? Yeah, of the DOT. Right now, their only plan for Lake Street is just a mill and a regrind.
That's...
That's it.
Yeah.
Their sidewalks aren't in their plan.
But that was before they were made aware of the existing problem. And they're going to be addressing that a brief September. They're supposed to come back in September.
When was that existing problem? Was there some meeting where that was?
No, no, that's when they were here on the public hearing.
Public hearing? Okay, thank you.
Right.
And we talked to the engineers about the existing water problem.
They may be open to discussion. Right.
Great, thank you.
And even if they don't do the sidewalks, we want to make sure that we can hold this money over. You know? But I can't see wasting $45,000.
Did she have an idea, John, whether or not we could do that, or...
She was... She said, depending on the project, depending on the funding source, they are more flexible or less flexible. It's not going to hurt us to reply anyway, you know? But I want to know that beforehand. Okay, anyway, that's the second.
I have our motion, need a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor. All those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
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 Okay. Look to request an executive session to discuss material personnel.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Carnival, August 7th through 10th. As you can see, Castle Rock shows, Castle Rock movements are here. They've set up. The mayor and I went to hightake the block on Friday to visit with them in operations. So we've been looking out for it. Talked about maybe a future with this particular group. Nothing yet, we're just kind of hoping. Also, you should have a copy of a certificate Brian Joleno received for attending the 23rd Annual Technical Conference on wastewater and water utilities in Lake Placid. And he got, might have the nice NYSDC contact hours and NYSDOH contact hours, between half hours for attending. Congratulations to Brian. Mr. Mayor, that's all, John.
Thank you, trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield.
As per the public hearing this evening, the first item that I have is to proceed with the next step regarding the property at number five and number seven, Montgomery Street. And I'd like to make a motion to authorize that advertised for quotes on the demolition of the property.
Second. Motion seconded. Any discussion?
Any timeline on that, Bob? Or what are we looking at? As soon as possible, or...
What I'll do, I'll get one back tomorrow.
Okay.
And everything should be taken care of, and they should be open in the next meeting.
Okay. So you'll set a date?
Yeah, I'll set all the dates, go over them.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by your side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Second item I have concerns the fire protection agreement with the Champlain Fire District. We have a meeting on Wednesday evening at 7:00. Trustee Huckrow, myself, and Bruce, I believe you can be there, correct? To discuss the contract for the upcoming year, because we're needing to do their budget. So it's that time of year again. So I think we have a pretty good idea of what's going to take place. I don't know if you have any input or anything you'd like to discuss as part of that this evening? So we should have something for the next meeting. Bruce, anything on that?
The third item that I have is a report on the last Dodge Memorial Library Board meeting. The first thing that they wanted me to pass along was a thank you regarding their phone line, having the direct line being placed back in the library. They're very appreciative of that. And also to the Public Works Department for the work that was done on the stairs, the back of the building. They were also very appreciative of that, and we have some very happy people over there. We are going ahead with the story hour, which will begin September 14th on Saturday mornings around 10:30 a.m. And we have a very capable young lady, Jessica Bechar, who's going to be running that, at least for the time being, and then working with the library to have it be ongoing after she sets away from her project. So it sounds like they're starting, hopefully, to come up with some programs for the youth of the village to welcome them in. The next item that I have tonight concerns this deck that we were presented with earlier this evening for the new bumper truck for the fire department. I don't know what the feeling is. We could make use of them tonight and advertise to... Or vote to advertise to offer bids. What's your feeling on that? Do you like some time to look them over, or...
What do you think on that, Bruce?
I think as soon as you go out, it may save you some money in the long run. The technical things are quite involved in the cap system. That's a major thing that's been added. There's six pages in there on the cap system. Other changes are just... We had a hose laying on the wrong side, that was changing, or minor changes.
Ball mark figure? $400,000, $450,000?
I'm guessing $355,000. Somebody else is guessing a little higher.
Even with that cap system?
Well, we eliminated a larger tank.
Yeah.
We eliminated the quart tank. We eliminated an $8,000 quick dump in the back. Plumbing on that is quite expensive. So we reduced it, I would say, $12,000, $15,000. So I think it's going to be in around $350,000. Over a 30-year life span, that's a pretty good deal, especially with the new firefighting system. The cost of manufacturing, it could be higher.
Somebody mentioned to me about a generator that we have that we can put on that truck instead of laying in the wood.
Right, this is a hydraulic generator. Right now, we're not having manpower problems. We have a good turnout, but for a while there, we were getting fires with three or four men. The truck is designed so that just pushing a button and a dash would start the hydraulic generator. The driver wouldn't have to run around and start a separate generator. It was a convenience thing because of lack of manpower. We don't know what's going to happen down the line. This generator is the smallest, it's 6.5 kilowatt, and that's approximately $12,000. That could be cut.
Could we use the one that we've got and install it?
We have one that's on one of the other trucks. We have, we have one that's on one of the other trucks that could, could be installed.
Is that?
But that, the driver has to get out and, and start.
Okay.
If there's enough manpower, it's not a problem. But the truck is designed to be run with a small number of men very efficiently.
Could, could that be wired so that it could be?
Absolutely.
Could be.
That could be wired to start right in the cab.
That's something we could wear ourselves. Not we, not me, you don't want me to do it. But is, is that?
Part of it's not, you know, that's not written in stone. If that's something you wanna eliminate?
Well, I'm not suggesting a mask.
I would think if the bids came very high, that's something that could be eliminated.
That's the only thing that I have. Basically, it's what we talked about, isn't it?
Right. And we are having trouble with our neutral aid pumper. It has to be checked over.
Bruce, you know, we're not dragging our feet on purpose. It's just that, it just gets down to that stuff.
We're at a point in the fire department where we've done everything we can to compromise and to rewrite and eliminate and, uh, we're trying to get the best unit for the village.
And we have a couple of things you mentioned earlier in the meeting, um, the front suction and is that something else we could put in as an option?
Something we could put on an option. That's not an expensive item. It's three thousand dollars.
So is?
Any on the manufacturer.
Is it best to do the same thing with the generator, put that on as an option as well, or?
Yes, that's what the board feels.
Oh, let's just go out for bid and see what, see what the bids come back. And then, like we said, if you, you had those options, if the bids come back, like you said, too high, that's one, you can eliminate one of the options if you feel.
At least you can get moving. I think if you get moving now, you spread the expense over a two-year period, two budget year. Truck would have to be ordered this year and it would be delivered April or May of next year. Usually a hundred and eighty working days heading on the manufacturer.
You're saying also by getting cranky now, we can, we can avoid that at the expense of the?
The salesman tells us.
Do we, we must have to have a signed contract with them at that point?
Everything starts when we sign the contract.
Right.
But the bigger we choose.
How much time is required for, for us to get the bids back? How much time do they need?
I talked to American with France. They say thirty days is plenty. Last time we gave forty-five days. I think thirty days? I'm not a salesman or anything, but.
It's August, you're looking at September.
Thirty days?
If you wanna get it in and get it decided by November.
Nowadays, they have a computer program. They feed in what you want in the computer program and they can have it for two hours.
I'll make a motion then that, that we authorize bids to advertise for bids on, on the pumper truck for the fire stations. As per the specs that we have with those couple of things as options.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? When do you wanna open these bids? Well, the third, the third of September or the seventeenth of September?
Let's see.
No, that, 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 that'd be thirty days.
We have to do the seventeenth.
And they won't, they won't get out of here. They won't get out of here for at least three to four days.
No, they're ready to walk tomorrow.
Wow. No, we gotta add.
Oh, yeah, we gotta change those, yes.
We have to change all that.
She has all the addresses. She has everything ready.
But you also gotta change the, the front, the, the village has to have their.
We were in the trouble last time because how the bids came in, there were some, uh, gaps because that wasn't included. So I went through there and took out anything that had to do with insurance, warranties, anything the village wants to.
There's a standard form that we have to use throughout the bid process, when I'm saying.
Well, the seventeenth, it gives you a little more thirty days. It's that gives you plenty of time anyway, doesn't it?
If you, if, could I interject? If you want to, um, have that coming from the board on the sixteenth, you want to open it at least a week before that.
Not very soon.
Because you want to review it and you want the board to review it. So you wouldn't wanna open it. You wanna go at least the day.
Say the tenth of September. I'll give him thirty-five days.
Yeah. Get out quite.
And then you can present it to the board. On the sixteenth.
Any other discussion? That's it. All votes in favor, but vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I have just one more item. It's again involving the fire department. Um, this past spring, the, my fire department applied for a grant under federal Title IV Voluntary Fire Assistance Program. It's administered in New York State by the Department of Environmental Conservation. Um, the RPFE submitted application, which included the purchase of two-way radios, backup pumps, and fire rates for a total of three thousand dollars. And on June twenty-fifth, um, they received notification from the DEC that the department had been granted an award of one thousand dollars and this money will be used to assist in the purchase of two-way radios. So it'll cover approximately half of the cost. So it's a very good thing for them to have, um, been granted.
I have one more thing. Uh, I talked to the, the kind of Public Works about our older ambulance today. We just found out it may be unreparable. Uh, you might, Tom had the mechanic checked it over. So we are no action tonight, but, uh, perhaps the next meeting you may think about having some action about surplus of E O M.
He, I talked to, to John. He really had not, uh, pinpointed any problem other than that there's something in the harness. He thinks it's a short in the harness. And he's on vacation all this week, so.
I talked to John Friday, last Friday, at the, he says that the wiring in that ambulance is not safe. You'll get it running, you can put it back on the road, but if something happens, do not come back to Public Works if that thing catches a fire when you're going down the road. That's exactly what we want.
It's, it's in the, the, not the.
It's in, it's in the framework.
No, no, not the wiring that the ambulance builder did, but the wiring of the chassis for ladder did not learn. The regular harness.
He also spoke to me about it, John did it, and he had, does have some very serious concerns about.
I don't have any, got on my mind. I'm just saying that he did, he really did pinpoint other things, other than it's a short. That's all he said. What year is it, Bruce?
Ninety, ninety-one. Just turned a hundred thousand, I think it's a hundred and thousand and four, a hundred and four thousand dollars.
You're not going to get any money for it, so. We could surplus it, but you'd be lucky.
It has a major transmission between the engine and transmission is a major bearing leak and it leaks oil.
Give it to the electric department.
You know, we're just pouring oil.
Don't start with that. I don't want any more damn junk given in this village. I'm sorry, that gets me mad. We, we've had junk for years.
Well, what are you doing? It's like, oh, you're so.
It's not junk, but I'm, I'm just saying it.
That is all that I have this evening. Bruce, you're set?
Awesome, thank you very much.
Okay, good.
Trustee Jefferson. Okay, Doug, do you have anything for us?
John's got a report and I'll have a little bit of.
Okay, would you like to go first, John?
Sure. Um, as you're right there, the archeological study was completed, basically finding no environmental or archeologic impacts in the way. We immediately sent that down to the state for review. We've gone through in the past three weeks, pretty detailed scope improvements with wastewater treatment people. We think we're pretty darn close to having exactly what they want considered up there. And the Maple Street plans are completed and we suggested, uh, schedule here. There is a couple of days here that they intended me to corner Bobby and, and a lot of his personnel run down through the final plans. Make sure everybody's on board with exactly what needs, exactly what's going in the bids plan. I think that, uh, George will be quite happy if we can get this out of bid.
Okay.
The schedule is pretty customary and it looks as though it's reasonably good time to bid project. There's not a lot of fight work this year, uh, in this particular area. It's consequently, it'd be right around Labor Day or the day after, which, uh, the board will be able to evaluate the bids and act on them. Talk to work done as well.
Bottom line is that street gonna be done this year?
That's their intent.
And, and the water line, I, I know I'm sort of rushing you, but I think the two are gonna work in together here.
In fact, based on Doug's work tonight of having Zachary easement, I would hope to be able to put that up and then bring it shortly thereafter.
Very good.
I believe you just need to authorize Bill to, to publish that title.
Make a motion. I didn't hear the last part of it, John. My hearing's not as good as used to be.
Um, the, the last part of the, uh, discussion with the mayor was about the water transmission main. And it appears as though with the Zachary easement, we may have everything pretty much in line. We could put that project out of bid shortly as well.
So we'd like to make a motion to have the, uh, bids on the easement, did I understand?
No. Just authorize the public legal notice.
Okay. She has to authorize a public, I'd like to make a motion to have the authorization, uh, issue of public, uh, legal notice. Geez, I got, what's the discussion today? Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all votes in favor.
Vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
The board's having a tough time coming up.
He's only on that side of the room.
We're not done with you guys yet.
Just a couple of other quick updates, um, to say the final planning with the wastewater treatment staff is, uh, nearing an end, thank God. Uh, I do have a permit application that, uh, the mayor will probably want to sign for the outfall pipe above the bridge. Should be done by, uh, Wednesday of this week, I don't know. In the next meeting, we might, uh, keep you pretty busy depending on how, how much we in our sense, Mr. Doug, to get done.
Good. And on July twenty-fifth, we had a, an excellent meeting with Wyatt regarding their significant industrial user permit. They were given a draft permit. They're pretty happy with it. They're just cross-checking a couple of things. We're doing some recycle with Carol Hanfield and, uh, we should have the EPA mandated, uh, significant industrial user permit given to Wyatt. In two weeks, two, four weeks?
Is that in all our discussions with DEC and permitting and everything?
That's it.
Finally, after X number of years, finally come to an end? Three years?
Four years.
Four years? Okay, I just have a couple other things. Geez, I'm taking a lot of heat on, uh, people driving pretty fast on Mountain View and Beacon Heights. So some of the local residents have talked to me and, uh, I'm gonna talk with Chief Craig and see if we can maybe reduce the speed limit from thirty down to fifteen.
He's already investigating a, a number of the new developments in the village for exactly that reason. So he's supposed to have a report for us in sometime in the near future.
Well, it's posted at thirty, but I guess people aren't even going anywhere near thirty. They're going forty.
I'm not even sure in some of the new developments that thirty is appropriate. And I think that's his concern, that thirty's too fast for some of the areas. So he's supposed to let us know, Brian, about that.
Okay. Again, a lot of good comments on the lights in the village. I think they look really nice, uh, so. We got them. Didn't cost us any money. It was good for the village. Makes the village look better. I've been working out of town for the last three weeks, so I've been kinda out of touch. I missed a couple of the meetings and, um, I apologize for that. But just my work schedule has changed for the summer. Uh, we just got over the sportsman barbecue. It was a huge success. Thanks to all the people that worked and supported barbecue this year. And I'd like to just take a few minutes and thank all the members of the board on the store committee. It was a good effort and it was a, I'm happy to report it was a happy ending. Uh, it was a lot of time and there was a lot of hard work involved and, uh, it looks like we've turned a corner in the village. We got a grocery store coming in and hopefully the bank will be, uh, the next that we can report on. And the only other thing I'd just like to say is, uh, just remember to, uh, support local businesses because, uh, we don't wanna lose the grocery store. You don't ever have to wanna go through this again. So if everybody tries to shop in town and support the local business, we'll be better off for it. And that's all I have to mention. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Dave?
I don't have anything other than I wanna thank everyone for all the work they've done with our flower pots. I think they're looking very nice and I know Trustee Huprow has put a big effort into this and, uh, Ben Arnold also. And I'd like to thank everybody. That's all.
Bruce, that?
I don't have anything to report. I'm on vacation.
Well, Ryan was talking about the savings of the store. We didn't have job applications in the office for that store a year ago.
Yeah, Alex DeGree called me. They're looking for a store manager, produce manager, head cashier. And there is some positions for part-time help to, part-time workers, so.
They advertised all over and we agreed that, you know, our, the village office could be a place to pick up applications.
And you can get them at Park in Plasburg also. And it was advertised in the paper.
Yes.
So if anybody's looking for a job, they're hiring, you'll save a lot, save a lot. Bruce, how much of the three hundred thousand did you spend on vacation? Okay. Private inside joke.
Okay.
Bobby? Bobby?
Yeah, just a small update on, uh, what the boys are doing at, uh, substation. The transformer pad is just about done. It'll, it will be done by Friday. And they've got a large hole, George, you've been up there, for the foundation for the box structures on the way. Hopefully by Friday, we'll have the foundations poured, weather permitting, and we're on our way. Finally.
That's it for me.
Just, uh, two things. Um, we're still working with the DOT on the Route 11 upgrade. And, uh, one of the things we'll be doing is Bobby, Pierre Valinsky, myself, and Dale Ferris are also, uh, working with the DOT. When they open up Champlain Street, it's gonna be an opportunity to put some, uh, upgrade some water and sewer lines that are under the road now. And also, it's gonna be an opportunity for, for the village to get some, some stuff done by the state at that time also. So we're working very closely with them to maximize the benefit of that project for the village. And, and also, uh, the D and H, um, project started today. We had a person in there, um, looking, doing, uh, hazardous materials survey just to make sure there isn't anything there. If there is something there, we know what it is and how much it'll cost to take it. And so that's underway and we should have that report by, uh, two weeks from time. So, uh, I'll leave it to you then.
At this time, John, everyone else?
No.
Okay. This time open up, uh, meeting to the public. No one wishing to address this at this time, but close that section of the meeting and ask, uh, for, and move for reasons. Motion made and seconded. Watching the discussion, I'll go to the board by usual sign of aye.
Aye.